Council meeting was called to order following the hearing roll call.
Mayor Redd, Mayor, Ewing.
Here.
Pardon.
Here.
Living. Modern.
Here.
Lenny. Zimmerman.
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. So approved. Crystal officer report?
One million five hundred fifty fi- one million five hundred fifty, five hundred fifty, one thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents in all funds. Two hundred nineteen thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-four cents in the general fund.
No additions?
Um, we do have additions today, but she should have those if today was payroll.
Disagreement.
Okay. The total is four thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and two cents.
That was payroll, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Bill of read, resolution fifteen dash eleven dash one was adopted on motion by?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Modern. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ewing.
Yes.
Pardon.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll be up this evening, go to committee report, go with the finance.
I think you guys all have this in your pocket, and if you look at it, that we're gonna do this. It's the 2016 temporary appropriations resolution, I think Jill said fifteen dash eleven dash two?
Yes.
A resolution to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the village of Waynesville, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015. Be it resolved by the council for the village of Waynesville, state of Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the said village of Waynesville during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016, the following sums be, and they are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows: That there be appropriated from the general fund, total general fund appropriation, two hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Street revenue funds, I guess it's special revenue funds. Special revenue funds, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Capital project fund, zero. Enterprise funds, and they're all listed there. Total enterprise fund, two million three hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Agency funds, one, one thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents. With a total, all appropriations, two million nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-nine oh three.
All right, we have a motion to adopt temporary appropriations.
I make the motion, Mike.
Modern.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ewing.
Yes.
Pardon.
Yes.
Any other committee report?
I have a question from the street committee.
Okay.
We never get around to sealing any cracks yet, did we?
No, we've had it ordered and they never showed up or delivered, and the company we contracted has not brought anything. We were on their list, but we talked about it two weeks ago when we had that real nice weather and we couldn't get it yet. We have an order in from as a, whenever they get us on their rotation, they're out of, well, they're out of eastern Ohio, but they had a plant down in Dayton, they did a demo for us so that we knew how to operate their equipment and everything, we placed an order, and we're just waiting. And I don't know how maybe we can go in a year. Um, I've been told that we can go fairly cold with it, so, uh, vote it as ordered.
I went down to Apple Farm Equipment a couple weeks ago to get some parts for my little garden tractor, and there was a couple people in an old yellow state truck it looked like, and they had a little buggy they were pushing, and one guy was going, or three people, man looked like him and his wife and another guy, and they were blowing out the stuff, and the lady was actually putting the stuff down, and man, they did miles of it down that, in township, I don't know.
Now, this, this, you probably used it before, they have an air compressor hose on the front of it, and a wand that had, and a hot tub, a hot mix, and they came out and we did some crack sealing out the part, so that we, we acclimated to it, and so, we put the order in.
I noticed in front of my house, they're this far in from the road, all, from Bob Waldy's all the way past, there's a crack in the road, and the cars come down through there and they drive off the road and they bounce across Bob Waldy's driveway. I called the state guys and talked to them about it, and that's not their responsibility, it's our responsibility to fill in the berm along the edge of the road, right there. I took my little tractor with the box blade and drug out my driveway and...
Are you talking, is, is the stone, not the asphalt?
Yeah, the stone, but it's this far dropping off, and when people swerve over, plus that crack down through, I don't know if they're connected or not, but, but they said that they, sometimes will fill the cracks, but it's up to our guys to fill, put the stone along the berm, even though it's a state highway.
We can look at that, because we did do some stone in different places, and actually, since our last meeting, we've, uh, put down about three loads of hot mix, uh, down on Mall Berry, down there, uh, your brother's place, they mentioned some bubbles and did some in different areas, and so, they told us that they were gonna keep the, the plan open until just before Thanksgiving, so, that week, we had good weather, we really been hitting that, um, so we got some hot mix down in Popple's and stuff. But we can look at that and, uh, get some stone down there, if that's a stone issuer, if it needs to be crack sealed, or, you know, you said...
It's both, it needs stone in it. And it was real simple for me to do with my little tractor with the box blade on it, I mean, just no handwork at all. I mean, if you drive down there and look at mine, and then look at my neighbors, you'll see the difference, so...
You didn't want to do your neighbor's?
I would if they had the stone, I mean, if Bob has plenty of stone in his driveway, it needs to be dug out there.
We can, we can get some stone down there, for sure. Unfortunately, I mean, because, uh, we put stone in the, the curves for safety, remember that?
Mm-hmm.
And it got a little dirty and so forth, so we didn't put it back in stone pile, we actually spread it in one of our parking lots, we could've brought that down there and...
Well, this needs to berm mix, it needs the fines in it.
So, uh, we'll, we'll look at it, and definitely, because it's going into, uh, snowplow season, we don't want that transition either.
Yeah, and it's pretty obvious.
One, one other thing, Fred, um, I've had two citizens come to my house and want to know, is there any way you can move those benches back, because they're about two feet off, three feet off the, off the curb?
I've seen that, they placed them.
That's pretty close.
And I think so too, I, I don't know...
They have, they have passed them down, they're just sat there.
I, I don't know what their finished product is, I was waiting to talk to them, because I, I agree, uh, I don't know if we take it upon ourselves that we set the benchmark as the edge of the sidewalk, you know, I mean, as the back leg, to get all we can, because that'd be my consensus too.
You allow the snow, push it up on them, that close, I would think.
But I, I agree, I think, you know, you order them and it's a standard bench, and based on the, the area we had, so, um, I'd like them to back further too, but I think, I don't think they're permanently fast, so, um, I can check with that, I'll check with the state inspector and see if they have a standard on that, because they said it and they placed them, but I'll, I'll follow up with that.
We're just getting two of them?
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's kind of up in the air, um, I, I think there's supposed to be more than that, but what happened was...
There's actually three right now.
There's three. We're supposed to possibly get more, but, uh, there's been some change orders and stuff with like, uh, grounding rods and so forth, so we may have to give those up to save on a huge change order, it may be washed, but, if everything would've came out, because we took the trees out of the project, because we ran in so many areas where the fire optic was, and the narrow tree lawn, there was really no room for a bulb, so we took out the trees, because they, and a lot of, the, basically the residents didn't want them anyway, and we were gonna trade them off for more benches, and light pole, um, standards for flags and stuff.
Banner brackets.
But, as it is, until we know what these change orders are, ODAS saying, let's wait, see how it all comes out in the wash, and, uh, then, we're planning on, if they're, if it's to our good, we'll get more benches, if it's to their good, we'll probably give up the benches in order to not have a problem with that.
And people ask me why they put the bench down by the post office, that I didn't know we were getting one.
Pardon?
I've had people ask me why they didn't put the bench over close to the post office, and I said, "I didn't even know we were getting benches," so, can't answer that.
Yeah, they, they were in the design for like, two or three right around the corner, and, uh, I mean, once they leave and they're done, nobody says, I don't think, that we can't relocate them, but right now, it's, it's their design.
All right, uh, so police report?
I'm out of this hidden place back here. Um, trick or treat went, uh, really well here, other than some cold weather, uh, people were generally happy with the turnout, we didn't have any reports of vandalism or criminal mischief during or after trick or treat, as, as we have seen in some years, so overall, I'm happy the way the night went. The Northwest Westminster Street construction, from a police perspective, uh, the latest construction has not been problematic, um, while sidewalks have been put in, we've seen some minor traffic constructions, but nothing major, um, very happy to report there have been no issues, um, reported during this time, no accidents have occurred, knock on wood, and crews have been cognizant of the school zone times, they've, they've really worked with, around the school zone times to make sure, um, traffic can get in and out without any problems. And then, um, finally, as this year draws to a close, um, among the other daily duties I have, I'm in the process of transitioning to 2016, um, this always takes time, because I have to move paper files into the archives, computerized files have to be updated, and so forth, that's all I've got.
Restoration.
All I have is, is an update on the project, uh, as you can see, they've brought in extra manpower, they've subbed out some excavation, uh, they have a expectation to be done by the end of November for the flat work and, and all the construction part of it, with the poles for the lights to be installed, uh, by the end of December, and, uh, the last I've heard that they still have expectations of meeting that deadline, so, uh, week or so goes, pretty skeptical, but, uh, since they brought in subcontractors, they've, uh, put a lot of manpower at it, so, uh, hopefully optimistic that they'll complete on time. And, uh, we're getting the equipment ready for the winter, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, mayor's report, uh, nine hundred seventy-four dollars of the general fund for mayor's court for the month of October. Old business, next.
You were supposed to have a lady from the Central Collection Agency sneak on it today, she couldn't make it, so you're stuck with me, so I'm sorry. But she put together this presentation, kind of explained...
Did you hit that button?
Oh, yeah, just now.
I can get, you know, the... There you go.
She put this presentation together to explain the, um, the new changes with the municipal income tax ordinance, so, I'm curious to go through it, but I know her, so, I'll do my best.
Hit the left button.
I am. I'm still hitting it.
Yeah, the left.
It worked when we practiced it, just moments ago. All right.
Okay. The reasons for the new tax ordinance, um, the passage of Sub House Bill Five on seven nineteen, two thousand fourteen, by the Ohio General Assembly brought in sweeping changes to the administration and the collection of mun- municipal income tax, um, and that is, and I think you all got that, you should have, in your packet, is that the ORC, the seven eighteen that's down there, did that, um, talks about all the changes, and that's why they drafted, um, the sample ordinance, which Connor worked on for us, and you have to follow by all of those rules, and it's a long one. So basically what this says too, is the ORC seven eighteen contains extensive guidelines, restrictions, rules, administrative procedures, that must be followed by every municipal corporation that opposes the tax. Um, to provide guidance and assistance in the process of creating new municipal tax ordinance, the Ohio Municipal League worked with municipal tax and other legal experts to create the sample ordinance, and like I said, Connor worked on that and detailed it for our village, so... The one that he did, um, does meet all the requirements and provisions for the ORC seven eighteen, and every city and village in Ohio with an income tax, municipal income tax, is working on the same issue at this time, and it's not specific to our village. That was one of the things, when I talked to her, that she said, "Please understand, it's not just the village of Waynesville, it's any municipality with an income tax." Basically, this is saying the same thing, follow ORC seven eighteen. For the taxable years after one-one, two thousand sixteen, the provisions of the new municipal tax ordinance and the new provisions of ORC seven eighteen will apply. And that, she gave the example, a taxpayer who files two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen tax returns in two thousand eighteen will follow the old rules for the tax year two thousand fifteen, and the new rules for tax years two thousand sixteen and seventeen. That's why we have this new one, and then, we had the old one, but that's why we have, so to have the new one. Um, what happens if Waynesville does not pass the ordinance? First, Waynesville would be in conflict with the state law and would not have the authority to levy an income tax. Without this revenue, Waynesville would not be able to meet debt payments. Uh, when she came and she had a visit here, we kind of looked at it, and our municipal income tax makes up half of our general fund, so without it, we're taking away half of our income. Each municipality that has a municipal income tax uses those funds for the purpose of providing services to the residents and businesses in the community, so any reduction or elimination of tax would create financial hardships. What other repercussions could occur? Waynesville were to fall into a fiscal emergency, the state auditor would step in and provide guidance and control of Waynesville's finances. If the village would remain in fiscal emergency for four years, and it cannot be expected that the village could correct and eliminate all fiscal emergency conditions within five years, and because we are a population of less than five thousand, then the state attorney general could file a petition in the common pleas court to petition for the dissolution of the village, and then she cited the ORC, um, in there, where that all takes place. In closing, the authority to levy a tax provides that the municipal income tax ordinance must be in compliance with the provisions of ORC seven eighteen. The municipal income tax ordinance presented for consideration complies with the provisions as outlined in SE- ORC seven eighteen. Complying with ORC seven eighteen is required to be able to continue to enforce the municipal income tax. The municipal income tax revenue is a vital part of the village's operating budget. And then, there's her information, if anybody has questions, specific questions for her.
So it's not a new tax or anything like that, it's just be able to continue as we have, we have to comply with the...
With their new rules, regulations and guidelines. I just asked her to put that together, so, I know it's clear as mud, but, I just thought, she had, because she said she had made those up for different municipalities and that we maybe, make things a little clearer. I think it did, I don't know.
And so, Jill, how long do we have this, uh, do you know?
I don't know offhand how long. Let's see what we amended.
Well, it was put on when the school was being built on.
The one that we amended last month was two thousand seven, does that sound about right?
School manager years?
Probably, yeah, that sounds right. Because I know when they built the, the gym, that was ninety-eight. Yeah, that sounds right, since two thousand seven.
Then we put the tax on right during that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the second reading on the municipal income tax ordinance, it's fifteen dash ten dash three.
Second.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Modern.
Yes.
Ewing.
Yes.
Pardon.
No.
Any other old business? Not, go to the new business?
What's the liquor permit?
For coyotes?
Yeah.
Uh, we have to, every community has to approve liquor permits for any establishment, uh, or they ask if we have any problem with them renewing it, and typically, we've never had.
In this case, Coyotes changed ownership, so they had to reapply for a transfer of the permit. Uh, they actually contacted the police department to do a background check on the people that were involved in the transfer, uh, which they passed, um, and then they pass it on to you guys to...
And what that does, it leaves, if, if there's an establishment that there is, or had been a lot of problems with, some communities won't accept the continuance of the permit. Uh, we've, we've never had that, that case.
Basically, it's not, it's not denying the permit, it's requesting a hearing, it's requesting a hearing to determine between the winter, Ohio liquor control, um, as to whether or not they should renew or not.
And I guess all we need to say is, yes, we have problems, or no, we don't have problems. Okay, any other new business?
Oh, I, I suppose everybody knows by now, this is kind of new business, but, uh, John Hickman lost his wife, uh, this morning, is my understanding, very quick, uh, so maybe a word to John, even if you don't know him, might, uh, help him get through this.
How did things go for the veterans thing? I was sick, so I didn't make it out there.
It, it went very well, uh, the veterans, uh, and the Vietnam, the Chained Eagles, they actually pretty much put it together and made it happen, and it, it went off remarkably well. The weather held up good, uh, it was afraid it was gonna start pouring down rain, but it was a little cool, we was even able to get Bob Waldy down there, so, he was really tickled, you know? Being a part of it, so, that was great, but, yeah, it, it went very well.
I'm glad.
And that concludes what we can do so, this year, and so what we're doing is, uh, letting everybody know that we're accepting donations and so on, so in the spring, we can, uh, try to fund the next phase of the project, so...
It's a good start.
Yeah, the, the Chained Eagles were, uh, I mean, very, very gracious and coming over and, I mean, they, they do this all over the state of Ohio, they really done this job, good group of people. Anything else? You? Solicitor, do you have anything?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have a question for the solicitor.
Okay.
Is it all right for us to discuss what we talked about last week, the last month in executive session?
Yes, absolutely, good, I guess for the village, but at the end of this calendar year, I'll no longer, uh, be able to serve as solicitor of the village, that, you know, unfortunately, the cost benefit, and I've been fortunate in practice to become extremely busy, um, and so I'll be stepping down at the end of the year, and want to let the village council know that last month at the October meeting, uh, to provide the village with, with several months to secure a replacement solicitor, and I thank the village and thank all of you, uh, for the opportunity to serve, it's been a pleasure, but, you know, ultimately, since business, not a hobby for me, and, uh, make those sorts of decisions about what I wanna be doing, and I... I don't know if we should clap for you, I don't know how you would take that. Never, you never want clap from the chair.
I appreciate your help.
I said it was not a, it was not an easy decision, it's something that I enjoy, but, you know, when you look at the dollars and cents involved, it's just...
And I will, uh, I've already been trying to make some contacts, and I'll try to have a recommendation, uh, at some point in time, as soon as I know who, what, when, where, and so on, so...
You know anybody that you, a person you could recommend, that you want to talk to?
Well, it's probably not gonna be... Well, it's, it's probably not gonna be anybody looking much firm, because they'd be facing the same sort of issues I do in terms of the, the, when you count in the travel time and everything else like that, that'd be almost impossible for anybody coming from the Bell Fountain area to, to be able to do this in a cost-effective manner. And really, I just don't know a whole lot of people out of either Wapakka or Lima that would be available, but there, there are thirty-five thousand attorneys in the state of Ohio, and.
We ought to be able to find.
I, I'm, I'm sure you will.
I make a motion to the mayor.
Second.
Yes.
Hardman?
Yes.
Thanks folks, appreciate it.